Call tonight's meeting of the planning commission to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clancy?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Ma- Mrs. Shrophto?
Here.
Mr. Basic?
Here.
Mr. DeKouliac?
Uh, may I have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting? Five twenty-seven twenty-five. Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from eight twenty-seven twenty-five, all in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Do we have any old business? Do we have new business?
We do.
And you are now on line.
Okay, alright, so. Alright, so new business, there are three resolutions on the agenda. Each one is for a draft chapter of the new code. So throughout the next few meetings, we'll be doing these reviews of the new code in sections. So that way we're not doing it all at once at the very end. And keep in mind, these are still drafts of the code. These resolutions, they're worded so that the planning commission is just recommending approving of these resolutions and that these resolutions are not adopting it, just basically stating that they're ones in support of the intent and direction that these chapters are going in. So it still allows to make minor changes, but you know, these codes that were shown to you or that I said you guys had to be on their day, other than most recent versions, they put the most, you know, the more major changes in the code. So we'll just review, we'll go over some of those major changes, but just keep in mind, you know, there's still minor tweaks that we're making, wording, you know, maybe adjusting, you know, setbacks, you know, minor changes that still need to be. So we'll s- go through, I'll go through them all at the same time, but I would ask the planning commission makes separate motion on each one.
Okay.
As we choose to do so. So resolution one twenty-seven, this is for chapter two, establishing the base districts. I think we, we actually learned about this a couple of months ago, uh, so I'll just briefly go over it quickly again. Uh, the biggest changes you'll see in here, uh, we will be consolidating the commercial districts, which currently have eight, so it will be down to three. C one, neighborhood commercial, C two, community commercial, and C three, uh, regional commercial. Then we will consolidate the industrial districts, from two of those down to just one, which is I industrial. Uh, we started fixing the, uh, uses and setbacks and lot sizes in those, they just became one of the same. So we would just have one industrial district. We have the PI, public institutional, which is a new zoning district. We would, uh, that would be meant for, you know, government properties, school properties, things, you know, it'd be better suited for those types of uses, fire stations, office office, libraries. So we'd have that, and then a major plan development. That, that district would be suited for larger projects. We're still deciding on the lot area for that, uh, whether it's anything greater than four acres or five acres or maybe, maybe for larger projects where basically they've resented major plan development and the developer will write their own zoning text. So they'd have to include the uses, whether it be permitted, initial, non-permitted uses, what the setbacks are, uh, lot sizes within that district, you know, any other type of development regulations, parking, landscaping, or none of that. Just pr- you know, provides for another, another toolbox to have flexible development in the city. Uh, we would also recommend decreasing the minimum lot sizes, this mostly across the board. The residential districts, we would recommend decreasing the R one from twenty thousand square feet to fifteen thousand square feet. R two would go from sixteen thousand to ten thousand, and R three, twelve thousand to seven thousand. The reason for that being is that they did a, an analysis to determine how many lots already meet that, the current requirement. It came back mostly across the board that sixty percent of our lots do not meet that requirement. So we can solve recommends, you know, getting it down to about ten percent if we can. Uh, these new lot sizes will get us down to about twenty percent of our permitting. So it's not quite at ten percent, but it certainly gets us a lot closer. And then the commercial districts, so C one, that is basically, that's just renaming the RB district, residential business. Currently requires sixteen thousand square feet, we want to require minimum lot size. Uh, C two, C three, those districts would be the combination of all the other commercial districts, which across the board is forty thousand square feet. We would not have a lot size requirement for that, or for industrial. Reason being, we want to allow for some more infill development. People will build on properties that they can build on to also have these setbacks and landscaping requirements. We constantly see variances for these, they, they get approved. So that tells us that it needs to change, this is becoming more of a common practice to not require a lot size. Uh, conservation district would remain at five acres every park, parks. PI district, we would, we'd go at four acres and the major plan development, still working that out with the solidified A or four acres of the lot. And then we would also reduce the, uh, minimum lot frontage requirements for commercial and industrial. We would propose fifty feet of frontage along the right way across the board. Uh, right now it's ranging between a hundred and a hundred and twenty feet. That's another one that we see pretty consistent variances on. Having it at fifty feet, that's sufficient access to give for any actual drive, um, for a commercial or industrial property. So any, and I'll pull up the zoning map really quick. Again, this is the map that's online on the project website. And just to give you an idea of what that consolidated commercial zoning looks like, so right in this area, three AM, it's around eight, there are actually six different zoning districts, commercial zoning districts here. So with the new code, that would just take it down to just C three and C two over here. So clean it up a lot better, um, they'll make it more consistent and easier to apply regulations, so. Industrial district. This is existing, from the I one, I two. The, uh, PI district is in this, I don't recall that, teal, awkward orange. This is the courthouse, so, you know, uses like that, fire station over here, over the PI. Yeah, I encourage you to go in here and click around, use that slider if you have any, you know, if there's any specific properties you're curious about, um, just to see how, how it will change, if any. Residential will remain the same, we're not, we're not touching those, so. We did get one request from a resident who properties down here. Apparently it's, it's a single family home, but it's owned commercial right now, so he's requesting that, you know, send that to, uh, I think this is R two, so we would include that in the new map for him. Yeah, other than that, any, any questions about the base district regulations? All good? Okay. Alright, moving on to resolution one twenty-eight, this is chapter three, overlay districts. So this would, uh, we, this would take out the overlay districts that have just been underutilized, which are the, there are road overlay, uh, Stokan overlay, Gilbert road overlay, Seasons Road, which would, Seasons Road overlay which would remain, and the Montrose setback overlay which would remain as well. Uh, we would instead have a mixed use overlay, which we talked about in the last meeting, go over that briefly again. And then the planned development overlay, or minor planned development overlay. I don't know if you guys want me to overdo this again, but same thing as the last meeting that we had, just, you know, about the mixed use overlay, the intent of it, just try and create that more walkable area, that would not require redevelopment, just provide that flexibility. This is the area that we would love to have that overlay. Yeah, this is what these regulations are built off for, for this, for the, for this section, yeah. Sorry. Um, sorry, was there a question? Give the mic.
About, the audience, the section up by where we're putting the amphitheater. If, if that would have been considered, just because I feel like you're gonna get a mixed use of activity up there on the amphitheater and then they kind of evolve more in the road area. I, I'm just curious if that was, it feels like more feasible that way than down as the A direct.
So in this area, we wanted to have, we feel like this would be the more appropriate to have, that walkable areas, since this is all surrounded by residential property, uh, has more of that neighborhood feel, this is really like Stowe's downtown area, if you want to call it that, you know, it's the central part of the city. The amphitheater area that we're looking at, that property, that area would be C two. We still have mixed use regulations built into that zoning district. So if they ever, you know, very close to development like that, you know, apartments on top and commercial bottom, there's still that flexibility. There's, really the biggest difference would be increased setbacks up in the, toward the road, that's it. Are then the other new overlays, the, uh, minor plan development overlay. So the cases for this, this would be for, um, we're still deciding on what the lot size, you know, lot threshold would be for this, for the project size, whether it's less than ten acres or less than five acres or something. Uh, but this would be, this would be meant for projects where they can't meet every zoning requirement, uh, or they, they want to do a use that's not permitted in that district, they can apply for this overlay. So it'd be the same process as re-zoning the property or, you know, doing a new overlay. Like if the planning commission council get approval, or have to be public hearing on it and all that. But they could do it so that they could, you know, request their, what we call site development allowances, it'd be kind of like variances from the code, and they could also include, uh, uses and then. So an example could be, somebody wants to do, somebody found a R three property that they want, didn't really make sense to rezone or something, they wanted to do maybe a mixed use development, or, I don't know, small coffee shop, they could do a little maintenance property, uh, without re-zoning the property. So the base districts would still apply, you know, so if it's owned in R three, they have to be four feet from the right way, you know, they could, uh, include a site modification to be twenty feet, you know. So they, they can build those into that overlay and the use, if it's not already permitted in the base zoning district. Uh, doing so, they'd have to meet some modification standards, so they'd have to make the building environmentally sustainable, you know, through LED design approval. Uh, they're doing housing, a certain percentage could be, they have to make it affordable housing, or they could include, uh, accessible design as part of their standards, or some other, you know, above and beyond regulation that they include in, in the development of the site. So if they get that, that requirement, just to let people be more flexible in what they can do, we'll probably include some more standards that are more geared towards commercial and even industrial properties and uses, so. That would be the intent of it, uh, just to allow for more flexible development. So the base district would still apply, they would opt this overlay with modifications from those regulations, and that's it, so it'd be, it's my case, overlay. So any questions on the overlay? Okay. Moving on to chapter four. Okay, so chapter four is the use standards, this has all the uses listed, there's like five pages of them. I'm not gonna go into every detail of every one, I encourage you to look through them. Oh, I can read through them. Um, I encourage you to read through a little, I'm still, you know, comment if you got any questions about what's permitted to be conditional or anything like that. Um, I'll go over some of the bigger ones that we talked about before, cannabis, tobacco retailer, car washes. What we were, what we would propose is to make these conditional only in the C three zoning, which is these areas on the map. A dispensary, we would limit that to only one permitted in the city. Drive-throughs that we prohibited, they had to be given the five hundred feet of schools, places of worship, libraries, playgrounds, parks, et cetera. So that would be the regulation that we, that we propose. Cause I, I think a big concern that people have before is that we're gonna have to pop up everywhere. So allowing only one in the city would take care of that. They still have to be a mile apart from each other, that's the state requirement. Right now they have to be a thousand feet of residential property, a thousand feet from schools and libraries and playgrounds, so. State requires the five hundred feet from, uh, the schools and playgrounds and one mile separation from uses, but that's it. So we would stick with the state requirements and only allow one dispenser in the city. Any questions at that part? Tobacco retailers, this would include, definition of this would include vape shops, which has been a concern recently. Again, only conditional in C three, we would tack on that one mile buffer from another existing or proposed tobacco retailer, and they have to be five hundred feet from schools, places of worship, libraries, playgrounds, parks.
Do you know how many we have in the city?
I think we have six right now.
So pretty much, we're four.
Yeah, yeah.
Separation.
I mean, they could have one in one of these areas, you know, based on this, so we can have up to three, under this regulation. Uh, car wash, you know, right now it's based on the population, which is not best practice, it's one to ten thousand residents. We would suggest same thing, conditional in C three, then one mile apart from each other. Which would effectively reduce, you know, allow up to what we allow now, which is three car washes. So would, you know, create non-conforming car wash locations, they can continue to exist as long as they can operate, uh, but once they close, then, then they, you know, you have to, within a mile of each other, so. Any questions on these? Everyone okay with these?
Yep.
Alright, then we are adding in regulations for accessory dwelling units, this is something that we get calls about pretty consistently. Uh, so a accessory dwelling unit or an ADU is an in-law suite or carriage house, you know, it can be attached to the house or detached. It's a way of increasing housing options for, you know, less really closely elevated. So, right now we don't have anything sufficient to address it, if somebody wanted to do a detached one in the backyard, they can like, be a second dwelling unit, additional use, and creates a bunch of issues, so. If it's, if it's attached, it has to be at least two hundred and twenty square feet, uh, might only be up to twenty-five percent of the dwelling area. And it's not so complicated for us now to handle them as attached ADUs, we just review as a, as an addition to the house, you know, a house can have two kitchens and another bathroom, you know, bedroom, so. Really, we want regulations for detached ones, so maximum size for a detached ADU would be a thousand square feet, and the maximum height would be seventeen feet, or the height of the principal dwelling, whichever is lower. So for most cases, the maximums would be seventeen feet. Uh, location, it could only be in the interior side yard or the backyard, that's as long as it's ten feet from this, uh, property lines. Has to be consistent with, the architecture has to be consistent with the dwelling and, uh, either the principal dwelling or the ADU has to be primary residence of the property. So we want, we want to do our best to avoid these, you know, become like apartments down the road, so. Uh, we'll make sure we have language there to, to avoid that. Any questions about ADUs?
Okay.
Yep.
Either the principal dwelling or the ADU. Thank, thank you too much.
I know what you mean, I, I think it needs cleaned up as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It just, it's a little confusing.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, that, that, I got, that is one of my notes, okay, it's all, so. Yeah, that'll be cleaned up to make it more, you know, enforceable. Are then accessory buildings, uh, this is something that we constantly get variances on, especially residential ones, through the board zoning rules. Right now it's just based, it's kind of a, a stepping, I don't know what you'd call it, it's, you know, between less than half an acre, you can have five hundred square feet, between half an acre and one acre, and eight hundred square feet. The name's A above one acre, Maxwell's twelve hundred square feet. Uh, we would propose to do it based on a, an equation, so it'd be the gross acreage of the lot, times four hundred, times eight hundred plus four hundred. So it'd be based purely on the lot size, so if you've got point six five acres, times that by a hundred, by eight hundred, add four hundred, you could have nine hundred and twenty square feet for accessory dwelling, uh, we also combined area. Uh, so it's set up, so if you have a half acre, or if you have one acre, sorry, let me, yeah, if you have one acre, um, sorry, if you have a half acre, you can still have, uh, eight hundred square feet as you're allowed to have. But instead of, you know, anything between a half acre and one acre, which is eight hundred no matter what, it's based on your block size.
How many square feet was the building over behind Lowe's, the accessory building?
Behind Lowe's?
No, there was a house in the road behind Lowe's, I guess it's actually.
On Gilbert?
Yeah, right. How large was it?
Would've been a, would come in as a conditional, so. Would've been more than twelve hundred square feet.
Would've been more than four thousand?
I don't think so, I don't think it was. Yeah, I would, so.
It's a good sized building.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I can't remember the exact size of that, um, you know, we, this would cap it at four thousand square feet.
Okay.
Which is sufficient, if they need variance from that, they can.
Come through.
They can request it, yeah. Any concerns about the, uh, accessory building size? Uh, setbacks? It was twenty-four hundred square feet.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, okay, so right now currently it's just a, kind of a, based on a stepping scale, uh, six feet, ten feet, twenty-five feet from property lines, based on outside, I think it is. We just wanted to add another step in there, where structures between eight hundred and twelve hundred square feet, and they'd have to be fifteen feet from the property line, and then if it's greater than twelve hundred, they have to be twelve feet from the property, cause that's another one that we get consistent variances on. I think that's, this is the last slide, so, um, other than that, you know, we're adding, we have the list of accessory uses, this event, and you, you know, if we wanted to accommodate, better accommodate these farm venues that might pop up at times. Um, we'll have solar ener- solar energy collection regulations for canopies that are ground mounted or roof mounted. And then a list, you know, new list of temporary uses for, you know, free farm stands, special events, um, anything like that, so. Yeah, well, I'm not, my intent here is to go to every little detail, all that's been proposed, just big changes, um, but happy answering questions, still encourage you guys to review it, you know, as we go on, and reach out to any questions. Yes?
You have a venue.
Yeah.
I think it needs a very clear definition as to what it is.
Okay.
I don't feel any kind of venue should be allowed in a residential district. I like, uh, number six, it said that, uh, unless we, the parking spaces shall be located on site. And that's perfect. It cannot be a one lane road, it must be a two lane road, and I think, I think this needs to be clearer and more definition, I think it's too vague.
We do have a definition.
Okay, but if you're gonna do something like this and have events, you need to have adequate facilities, must be provided. They must meet ADA, you must, they must be accessible. But I strongly feel the events should not be allowed in a residential district. I think it's gonna just open up, open, can, awards, and the other question is, how are you gonna possibly monitor, you can't, you know, somebody could have an event, they could have twice as many people as are allowed, who, who's gonna police this, it, it can't be policed.
It would be conditional, so it would be up to you guys in council. Um, they have to be on properties that are at least one acre or larger. Uh, so it's not like, you know, your typical subdivision, you won't be having, you know, weddings and stuff. Um, and then for the definition, so this is part of the new, because that we're still reviewing.
Okay.
Uh, we'll try and find that in the.
I just noticed, you know, the forest in the past, you know, it was not pretty. And, uh, they didn't, I, I don't feel they had what they needed, you know, off-site parking and a one lane road in and out, that's, how does that work?
Yeah.
And they didn't have facilities, and they had nothing for people and blockers or, you know, handicapped. And if you're gonna have an event, and you're gonna have a wedding or who knows, family gatherings, you were going to have people with those needs, and those were not even considered.
These are still in a review, we haven't given all our comments yet, but this is the, uh, definition they have so far. We can definitely tell them to, uh, narrow this down, or bulk it up, or say building or portion of the building for the hosting of victims, and that's, so, very general and fair and fair enough.
I think it's very vague, and after what we experienced, I think it needs to be made up.
Yep.
Cause you're, you're allowing loopholes, and that's kind of what, yes, it's.
That one was a real mess, because based on the law, they go, they always, without permission.
Still working on it.
Yeah, and it, it just, it's nuts.
Well, I was disappointed because I heard, and I don't know if it's true, that the state fire marshal approved it, which that usually does not happen when it goes to the state, is that a rumor or?
It's not.
Okay.
They're, they're still working on it.
Thank you, we feel better.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So my second comment is this new discourse to, is the garden, no backyard gardens, please no.
I was considering if we even want to go down that road and break the way gardens.
No, because off-season, if you drive on Graham Road, that thing, I'm sorry, it just looks tacky.
Which one's it?
It's the one that was on Graham Road, or fifty-nine, because off-season, it just looks ratty, and it's in the front yard.
Fifty-nine. Yeah, right. Fifteen. Yeah.
Yeah, it's really nice curvy hill, I mean, that's their curvy hill, but I just don't think a garden like that should be allowed in the front yard.
Yeah.
A rear yard, possibly a side yard, depending on, you know, the site plan, but I, I really don't feel that that's what we want to keep allowing. It's just not a good aesthetic. Those are my only two comments.
So. Yeah, we don't have reg-
They were contentious, sorry.
They were, they were.
We don't have regulations on gardens right now, we have regulations for garden fences, as regarding, isn't a front yard, there's fence requirements there. And I, I think if the steering command mentioned, part of the problem is that we have those regulations now, we gotta deal with it.
My understanding is we're willing to do this, that is really basically a temporary approval until we improve. Now, you guys have a lot of opportunity to change that, and this is my ability to make a change, I, I just don't think a garden should be allowed in our. It's just, it's just.
I agree. Okay. I'll make that call it now, because it's all for. Okay. Any other?
Now, do we need three motions on this?
Yeah, yeah, that's, it's just a motion to recommend approval of residents.
Okay. Right, okay. Yeah.
It's not filed, it's not adopted, it's just the general direction and intent of it, yeah.
All right, well, let's look at twenty-five dash one twenty-seven, have a motion.
I have a motion to approve, uh zoning code changes chapter two, twenty-five dash one twenty-seven, preparation?
Second. It's been moved and seconded, we approve twenty-five dash one two seven, zoning code changes chapter two. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Chopto?
Yes.
Mr. Basic?
Yes.
All right, moving on to twenty-five dash one two eight, is there a motion?
I motion for approval, twenty-five dash one two eight, zoning code changes chapter three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve twenty-five dash one twenty-eight, zoning code changes chapter three, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Chopto?
Yes.
Mr. Basic?
Yes.
And now on to twenty-five dash one twenty-nine, zoning code changes chapter four.
I make a motion to approve twenty-five dash one twenty-nine, zoning code changes chapter four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve twenty-five dash one twenty-nine, zoning code changes chapter four, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Chopto?
Yes.
Mr. Basic?
Yes.
Anything else this evening?
Yes, sir.
I move we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.